All right, testing, can you hear me? We're gonna be doing a countdown shortly, so stand by. Okay, we have about one minute. Thirty seconds. Fifteen seconds. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five.
Okay, we're live. Good morning, everybody. Thank you all for being here this morning. Today is Wednesday, June fourteenth. It's also Flag Day. And welcome, everybody, again, to the Board of Cedric County Commissioners. We'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk.
invocation to be led by a moment of silence, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Roll call, Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
County announcements.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Commissioners and Chairman, Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. We wanted to let everyone know that Cedric County Fire District One has a new way to warn drivers that a fire truck is responding to an emergency and motorists need to use caution. Fire District One vehicles are now equipped with a system called Haas Alert that automatically sends digital notifications to drivers in the area when a truck's lights and sirens are activated. We put together a short video to help explain how Haas Alert works and how citizens can get these notifications.
Fighting fires is always a dangerous job, but emergency crews are also at risk on the road. Collisions are a leading cause of injury or death when drivers don't move over for a fire truck because of distractions, weather conditions, or other factors, the risk of collision is even higher. Now Cedric County has a new way to warn drivers that a fire crew is headed to an emergency or on the scene. As soon as the fire truck's flashing lights are activated, a system called Haas Alert automatically sends out a digital notification through GPS to other motorists in the area. The alert appears on the car's navigation and entertainment screens and on the driver's cell phone. This advance warning to slow down and move over for a fire truck has been proven to reduce the risk of collisions by ninety percent. It's a simple and effective way to protect our firefighters and make the road safer for everyone.
Fire District One has been using this system for the last few months and testing it, and they have actually notified over eighty thousand people as they've been on the way through the system. So we have more information online, and if you would like to learn more, visit CedricCounty.org.
Okay, very nice.
Okay, for county good news, Laura Hadley of IT has been recognized for women who lead in major companies by the Wichita Business Journal. This feature takes a look at some of Wichita area's top businesswomen and their insights on what they think is important. Laura is an IT project manager on our IT Business Solutions team, and this recognition will be printed in the June sixteenth edition. Laura is here, so I thought I'd give her a moment to come up.
Good morning, Laura, and congratulations.
Thank you, and I appreciate being able to be here today and appreciate the honor. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you. Congrats again.
With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay. I don't see any, so thanks again. Welcome back from your time off.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, we did not receive any emails on the five o'clock deadline last night. Just kind of a reminder that we did the five o'clock email deadline during COVID and as a result of a lot of complications of communication during COVID. And so I think we're, we and the staff, are looking at maybe going back to just our regular addressing. But as of now, we're still going with the five o'clock deadline for the public to know before the five o'clock deadline for an email to us on Tuesday evening before the Wednesday meeting. But we are looking at possibly going back to what we've done pre-COVID, as many, many things are now back to pre-COVID. So just a, just an advance comment. On the, so we have no email public agenda that we received, but we do have on the public comment sign up, we do have one person signed up to visit with us. So good morning, Brett Anderson, please. And Brett, welcome back to the meeting. I think you know the deal. We got five, five minutes, but name and address, please, and welcome to the meeting.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Brett Anderson. Address is eight forty-four West Fifty-Fourth Street North. I'd like to talk a little bit about some election stuff this morning. I did, first off, I want to say that I'm highly against the electronic machines, the pull pads, the tabulators, and mail-in voting. My opinion, so let's just get that across first. But I did have a couple of questions that arose from the workshop you guys had on June sixth. You guys were talking about funding for the election office. The election office did come back with a few proposals. One of them that was a little bit of a question for me was that a proposal was made for sending out mass mail-in ballot requests to reduce the workload and wait time at the polling Two questions that I have is, will everyone in the county get a Form A? And B, if everyone in the county does get a form, will it be left blank or will it be prefilled out? There were some questions during the meeting because there was a question to ask if it was going to cost more because each person would be personalized. That does bring up a couple of concerns for myself. When the form is sent out and it's prefilled, you lose your chain of custody for that form. Basically, anyone can sign that and send it back in. Now, I do know we have signature verification, but if someone else was to sign that form and send it in, it still has to go through adjudication at the office. Now, that could also lead back to if a person didn't realize that they got the form in the mail that they didn't ask for, it is sent back in by someone else. When they go to show up that day, it will show that they have sent a form back in, they get sent to the provisional table. This could lead to a tremendous amount of provisionals on Election Day or early voting. This could also lead to more issues at the canvas when you guys show up with kicking out double ballots, issues like that. I spent a lot of time last year at the election office, working down there. I understand they are under a tremendous amount of pressure people-wise. I think they have some structural problems with procedures, but they don't have people. They do need more people. I would like to put out there, too, that I would like to see time studies. I would like to see more concrete info before they start throwing out mail-in ballots to everybody. I'm also in favor for more polling locations, and I'm also in favor of sending out reminders as a postcard to either say, hey, you vote here, 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 or if you want a mail-in ballot request, you have to ask for it. That's all I got.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brett. You asked a lot of questions, but you know, what we can do, we'll make sure that, I don't want to misquote an answer, I mean, maybe some, some might have it, but you've got your phone number here.
And I fully understand that you guys don't have control over that office except for funding, so.
And we've still got, you know, the funding decisions to be, Commissioner Howe has a comment, but I'll just tell you, Brett, that we'll have, you've got your phone number here, and we'll have the election commissioner call you with some responses to this. But Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Chairman. I just, I think, I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess that the reason that they want that, let me answer one question, they do send out the application to one hundred percent of registered voters in Cedric County. That is how they do. They, they're not allowed to send it to any, any subset, so if they send it out at all, they have to send it to one hundred percent of every single registered voter in Cedric County. And we know in some election cycles, we have quite a bit, quite a bit lower voter turnout. So we're not just targeting those who we think are gonna vote, we have to, we have to send out to everybody. But I think the reason that they do the prefill that ballot primarily is because there is a voter ID printed on that application, and that application makes it very unique to that particular voter. And when they get that back, they just simply scan the barcode, and it also does require a driver's license number, I believe, to, to complete the process. So they have to have their, their name is, all that's prefilled out. They have, so the voter has to add their driver's license number or some other form of ID, they have to send that in. But usually people use their driver's license number, and if that, in that case, they can scan the voter ID, and that helps them process those ballot applications when they come back. I do see your point, though, and I do think that that is an interesting point I've not thought about before. But if they were to not pre-print the applications and just simply provide the applications, I don't know how much it would slow down the process when they got back. I think it's a great question, and I do think we need to think that out. And then one other, one other frustration I have is, I can't tell you how many people receive that mail ballot application, and I hear from people all the time saying, the county sent me a ballot in the mail, I didn't even ask for it. And what they mean by that is, they're confused a little bit between the application and the ballot itself. They say the county sent me a ballot, and they really mean they sent me an application. And by the way, third parties can also, I'm not sure how the state laws right now, at least in the past, third parties could send out applications. And sometimes people would get two or three ballot applications in the mail, they would say, I got two or three ballots in the mail, I didn't ask for any of them. So it's very confusing to people who don't ask for that application to receive that in the mail. Sometimes it, it causes more, more concern, I think, than maybe than what it deserves. But anyway, and Brett, and on the electronic stuff, I'd like you and I to have a sit-down discussion about that personally, if that's okay. I'll give you a call. All right, thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you for those responses, and, and again, we'll have the election commissioner. I guess it's a good time to plug that, that election commissioner is looking for support and temporary help during the election season, which is about fifty days from now is a primary that covers a lot of school districts and the mayor race and a few other things. So, so if anybody is interested, please contact the election office. I've seen it's a lot on Facebook and a lot of advertising for that. So, thank you. So Brett, if you're interested in helping, have you helped before? Okay, thank you, thank you. All right. That's the end of public comment. Motion received and filed. No other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes, item A, regular meeting minutes of May third, twenty twenty-three.
Commissioners, if it's all right with you, I'd like to combine item A and B, which is the regular minutes of May third and the regular minutes of the meeting of May seventeenth. You've had a chance to review these, and any other comments or questions or corrections? I don't see any, so I'll make a motion that we approve items A and B, which is the regular meeting minutes of both May third and May seventeenth.
Second.
Motion and a second. No other comments. Madam Clerk, may, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Retirements, item C, recognition of Cedric County retirements.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Sheena.
I'm here to present a retirement award today. Mark Boer, our traffic engineer with the Division of Public Works, will retire July first after thirty-seven years of service. Mark originally joined Cedric County March third, nineteen eighty-six. We thank Mark for his years of dedicated service, and we wish him the very best in his next chapter. And we are here to present him with a certificate and also a Cedric County statue. So Mark, if you want to say a few words.
Very nice, Mark. Congratulations.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chairman, hi. So there was a hi day for people that don't get that. So it's been a wonderful thirty-seven-plus years. It's been a fun ride, been an interesting ride. I've enjoyed all my time here, working with the various commissioners and personalities throughout the years, and it's just time for me to go terrorize other places now, so.
Well, Mark, I tell you, congratulations. I know you've, your job is one thing, but teasing about the hi thing, y'all know that his talent also is that he was, he emailed me about six times with various cartoon characters of highs. Oh, wrong. It seemed like many, anyway. So Mark, it's been great to work with you, and there's a couple of comments here. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Mark, I've, I've actually known Mark for a lot longer than in private life than I have here in public life. He has served as a Boy Scout leader for a lot of years, and when I worked with the council, I, I could always rely on Mark to, to help us out there. So I appreciate all of your work in your private life. I sincerely appreciate all your work as a engineer for the Public Works Department. You still haven't fixed one of my roads, so you can't retire until that's taken care of. But beyond that, I thank you very much for your service, both to the community and to the county. I appreciate it.
Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Chairman. I echo the words of the, of Commissioner Dennis. I also, I just want to say thank you personally. I've been here longer than my colleagues, and, and I think that you and I've had, I can't tell you, dozens, if not maybe a hundred, interactions on different issues. And you've always been extremely thoughtful, you, you listen to the concerns. You are an engineer, so one thing I really appreciate about you is that you are data-driven. Sometimes you don't like the answer, but you are, you do your job very well, and, and I appreciate the fact that you're objective and you're data-driven, and, and you've been a great listener and a great one to work with. So I appreciate all you've done, your service to Cedric County, and I almost want to say congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you so much. Well, I've been here for a few years, but I know that every time that we've worked together, I've always really appreciated how, well, Commissioner Howe kind of hit on it, but a lot of times I feel like we get told what we want to hear sometimes and not necessarily what we need to hear. And I know that I've never had that issue with Public Works in general, and I just really appreciate that because I know if I have a question, I'm gonna get a real answer and, and figure out where, where to go next with it. But thirty-seven years is a long time to be, to be here, so thank you for your service for that time, and I wish you the best of luck in your next ventures.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
Amen. Commissioner Beatty?
Thank you, Chairman. And I'm appreciative of management that we allow these opportunities to come. Mark, you've been here thirty-six and a half years longer than I have, and, and obviously, when you hear the conversations about what people think about you, I'm sure, and I hope, it's, it's encouraging to you. And what I also hope is that all of our staff, the twenty-seven-hundred-plus employees, they realize that, that this is community service. What you're doing is your vocation, but you're serving this community, and you've done so very well for thirty-seven years. So on behalf of Cedric County and District Four in particular, we appreciate you, Mark. Happy retirement.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I knew Commissioner Beatty when he was a whiny little pitcher for Northwest High School. I had umpires.
Whiny, huh?
Actually, he wasn't whiny, so he was good.
Where are you gonna put that, that keeper? Where are you gonna place that?
It's gonna be on a patio at seven twenty-seven Pine Oak Drive, Edmond, Oklahoma.
Oh, really? Okay.
My fiancee Teresa's back here, and she, she came up today, and that's where I'll be moving Friday of next week. So I may be retiring officially July one, but you only have until Friday of this week to torture me or whatever.
Is it in Edmond? I think the city manager in Edmond is, or former assistant city manager here in Wichita, so if you need some help, call.
Well, I, I did ask Public Works if they would consider on the R-175s and CIP next year to do all the streets in Edmond, so I don't think that's gonna happen, but.
And we might put an Amtrak stop there, too, so you can get up and down. Okay. All right, Mark, thanks a lot. Much appreciated.
Motion received and filed.
Okay, second. Motion and a second. Thanks for the nice comments, everybody. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thanks again. Next item, please.
Appointments, item D, accept the resignation of Ryan Collins from the Cedric County Third District Citizens Advisory Board, student position.
Okay, Mr. Papun?
Mike Papun, County Counselor, Mr. Chairman. Item D is accept the resignation of Ryan Collins. This is Commissioner Dennis's, member of the Citizens Advisory Board, and I'd ask you to accept the resignation.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. And what I really appreciate is Ms. Collins' service to my Citizens Advisory Board over the last year. She was a senior, and that's what I always select as a senior each year, so that we rotate the, the student position out on my board. And she attended all my meetings, she participated in all of my meetings, she had the same exact rights as every other member of my Citizens Advisory Board, and I appreciate that she took her duties and responsibilities to heart. She is going to Kansas State, which is a great location, next year, so she cannot continue to serve on the, on my Citizens Advisory Board anyway. And actually, our next meeting, I believe, we'll have her replacement. I've already identified her replacement, but I just want to thank her very much for her service to our community. And with that, I move that we accept the resignation.
I'll second that. Being no comments, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item E, resolution appointing Brandon Russell to the Cedric County Mental Health Advisory Board.
Okay, Mr. Papun?
Mr. Chairman, Mike Papun, again, County Counselor. This is one of Commissioner Howe's appointments to the mental, Cedric County Mental Health Advisory Board. You each have three appointments. I believe that Deputy Chief Russell is being recommended for appointment to replace former Chief Robert Lee on, as Mr. Howe's, or Commissioner Howe's appointment. Resolution's in proper form, and ask you to approve the resolution.
Okay, Commissioner Howe?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to say thank you to Chief Robert Lee. He has been a, a champion for mental health in the, in the community, and he's actually one that's met with me numerous times privately, talking about mobile mental health concerns of the City of Derby, which obviously translates into other, other areas as well. So he's been a great champion for the issue of mental health, and I want to say thank you for his service. He is choosing to spend more time on his family as he's retiring from his position, so I want to say thank you to him. But he did recommend Brandon Russell, a deputy chief. I want to say thank you for stepping up to do that position. I think your perspective is gonna be great, because I know Chief Lee was, Chief Lee had a great perspective as well, because of his position in the, in the community. So thank you for stepping up. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we would approve the appointment of Brandon Russell to the Mental Health Advisory Board.
Second that. Being no comments, further comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And here to swear in?
Good morning, Commissioners. Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Cedric County Mental Health Advisory Board, so help me God.
I do. Just appreciate the opportunity and hope to see y'all a little bit more.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Next item, please.
Item F, resolution reappointing Simone Ward to the Cedric County Animal Care Advisory Board.
Again, Mr. Papun?
Mr. Chairman, Mike Papun. This is another appointment by Commissioner Howe. This is one of his two appointments to the Animal Care Advisory Board, and he's recommending the reappointment of Simone Ward, from the County Counselor's office, by the way, to be a member of this board. The members of this board fill various niches or try to fill various niches, and I can say Simone Ward has been active in animal care organizations and loves animals and will be a great addition to this board. But anyway, I'd recommend that you adopt the resolution.
Okay. Commissioner Howe?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And again, Counselor Papun's correct that if you wander outside her offices on the sixth floor, you'll run into her quite often. So thank you for your service to Cedric County, Simone, and I think you're the perfect appointment. It used to be that we were nearly neighbors, I lived a block away from you, but I moved away, but you were in the heart of the district, and you, you've been extremely dedicated to the issues of animal care. So I think you're the perfect appointment for this, and thank you for stepping up for another round. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we would approve the nomination of Simone Ward to the Animal Care Advisory Board.
I'll second that. No other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And here to be sworn in, again, Kelly Hart.
Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Cedric County Animal Care Advisory Board, so help me God.
I will.
Simone, thanks for stepping up. You say anything?
Well, thanks for the reappointment. I appreciate it. I love being on this board. Our animal control, all of them are rock stars, fabulous people. They work really, really hard on the safety and health of the animals in our county. We do, too. Hopefully, y'all will be seeing some code changes coming up pretty soon. The only thing that I want to say is unfortunately, the situation in Cedric County is very dire when it comes to animals, and I just want to point that out. Hopefully, changes will be made at some point in time, but we'll see what happens, and hopefully we can, we can make some improvements. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Simone, and thank you for playing a supportive role in the hi, the hi video.
Hi.
Seems to be a common theme today. Okay, Madam Clerk, please call, or next item, please.
Item G, resolution reappointing Commissioner Pete Meitzner to the WSU Tech Board.
Mr. Papun?
Chairman Meitzner. If it'll please the board, we can take items G, H, and I together. As you are aware, the chairman gets to make various appointments to boards, appointing other commissioners to these boards. Item G is reappointing himself to the WSU Tech Board. Item H is a recommendation of appointing Commissioner Ryan Beatty to the Wichita Downtown Development Corporation. And item I is the, another resolution, appointing Ryan Beatty to the Chief Elected Officials Board. All the resolutions are in proper form, ask you to approve the resolutions.
Okay, thank you. And I think, Commissioners, you know that we've been delinquent in getting these appointments done, and there'll be another series of other appointments of board members, I think, scheduled maybe for the next meeting we have. So, but these are these three, and a couple of them are replacements for the previous commission vacancy, and so that's what And so, that's what that is. Since I'm named, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the appointments of Pete Meitzner to WSU Tech, Ryan Beatty to the Downtown Development Coalition, I guess it's called, Corporation, I should say, and to the Chief Elected Officials' Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. No other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Next item, please.
New business. Item J, appointment of a county counselor.
Good morning, Commissioner Sheena Schmucks, Chief Human Resources Officer. June twenty-ninth will mark the last day for County Counselor Mike Papun. Mike will be stepping away to re-retire, and we want to thank him for the last five years of service to Sedgwick County.
Re-retire?
Today, I am asking for your approval of the appointment of Justin Wagner as the new county counselor. He will work alongside Mr. Papun for the next few weeks. Mr. Wagner currently serves as a deputy county counselor, and he has been with the county for over ten years. With this, I ask for your approval of the appointment today, and will stand for any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions? I don't see any questions, so I'll make a motion that we approve Justin to be the new county counselor. Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
And our congratulations to you.
Thank you so much, Commissioners. Justin Wagner, for the record. First off, thanks for the confidence that you've shown in pointing me to this position. I very much appreciate and value this opportunity. Next, I wanted to express some well-deserved appreciation for Mike Papun. You know, Mike's worked in the Sedgwick County Counselor's Office for, I calculate it, thirty-six years, Mike? Have you had the two up? Is that right? Okay. Thirty-six years Mike's been in the office. He started here in nineteen-eighty-four, retired, came back in two thousand and eighteen. Mike's been an incredible asset for Sedgwick County. I think you all recognize that. I think county staff all recognizes that. Mike, we're all going to miss your outstanding legal advice, your leadership, and also your daily doses of wit. We've seen a little bit of it even here today. So, we really will miss you. And you're going to be a really tough act to follow. So, thank you very much. I'd ask the Chairman if it's appropriate if we do a round of applause for Mike. Speech? Mike? No? Okay.
Justin's not done yet.
All right. And Chairman, I want to make a couple other comments. There's what I thought was a fitting quote from legendary University of North Carolina basketball coach, Dean Smith. And it said, "When you make a basket, you point to the player who threw the pass. That applies not just to basketball, but to everything we do. No one makes it through life without lots of assists." In the ten-plus years I've worked at Sedgwick County and the County Counselor's Office, I've had a lot of assists. I've been very fortunate. Had a lot of support. I mean, I first point out my family. They've been very supportive of me throughout the entire time I've worked here. Also, I've been very fortunate to have very strong mentors in the County Counselor's Office, including Mr. Papun, Rich Usen, Jennifer Magania, and Bob Parnacott. All helped to superbly demonstrate how to practice municipal law. It is a specialized subset of law. I've also been privileged to work alongside very talented and hard-working attorneys in the County Counselor's Office and also our support staff. And then all of you as county commissioners, I've really appreciated working with all of you, and also how much respect you have for the role of the County Counselor's Office that we have within the county as an organization. And then lastly, county staff. We really have a team-oriented group of subject matter experts. They really make our job in the County Counselor's Office easier and are really also great to work with. So, like I said, I've received a lot of assists over the last ten-plus years. I'm incredibly excited about this great opportunity, and thank you so much.
Thanks again, Justin.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mike, do you have any comment?
Sure. This is supposed to be about Justin, not about me today.
Well, you can talk about Justin.
Waylaid, but just a little bit of history and talk a little bit about Justin, too. He stole some of my thoughts in his discussion. Justin's the eighth full-time county counselor that the office has had. We, county counselors, first full-time county counselor was in nineteen-eighty-one. And since that time, I was appointed the seventh, and Justin's now the eighth county counselor. For the past ten and a half years, Justin's worked extremely hard, as all of you know, to put himself in the position of being the county counselor. And he's been very loyal, and I've trusted him on so many things, not only my first stint with the county, but especially over the last four and a half years. Of course, he was promoted to a supervisor a few years ago, and then when Trish Parker left, he became my deputy. I couldn't ask for a better deputy, and he's had a lot of experience in running the office. You know, Justin's been very active in the Wichita Bar Association. He's very well thought of by the other attorneys in this community, probably more active in that than any attorney in our office I can remember for a long time. He's been on the board for a long time for the, our County Counselors' Association. He has a great network with other county counselors across the state. He's also on the board with the Kansas Association of Counties now. So, he's had a lot of involvement there. And as Justin touched on a minute ago, one of the great things about your hiring of Justin is back ten and a, ten-plus years ago, when we were in the office, it was, we had a lot of experienced attorneys. We had eight attorneys at that time, seven of which probably averaged twenty-five years or more in the office. Rich Usen, who was an outstanding county counselor, had like thirty-four years in the office, or thirty-four more or more years. Trish Parker had thirty-plus years. I had thirty-plus years. You had people like Bob Parnacott with twenty-plus years, and Karen Powell, and Mike North, who combined the city of Wichita and Sedgwick County, twenty-plus years. You just had a wealth of experience. And that group of attorneys hired Justin. And he was able to come in and work on zoning and planning laws and health laws with Bob Parnacott, who was outstanding attorney, especially in public health law. And as most of you are aware, Justin was the attorney that really led us through the COVID, COVID process and public health laws relating to COVID. He got to see how Rich Usen ran the County Counselor's Office. Rich was probably the finest county counselor the county's ever had. He got to work and see how Mike North handled litigation for the county. He got to see Jennifer Magania, who's now been city legal director for about eight years. She was in the County Counselor's Office for almost twenty years. Got to see her handle HR personnel matters. So, all of this is so valuable in linking that group of attorneys to the attorneys we have now. We have one attorney with three years of experience and three attorneys with a year or less of experience. And Justin has been instrumental in hiring all of these attorneys, training these attorneys. And I think we have a great batch of attorneys to lead us into the future. And he's the perfect candidate to do this, and I applaud your decision today.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. Great comments. Got a couple of lights on here. Commissioner Dennis?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. And congratulations, Justin. It's well deserved. I had not known Justin before I came on the commission, but I value his advice. The one thing that I've learned with working with an awful lot of attorneys is they always tell me what I can't do. They never tell me what I can do. So, it's an interesting dynamic, working back and forth with the attorneys. But when they tell me what I can't do, it keeps me out of trouble. So, that I sincerely appreciate. It's a tough day, because we're saying, now, Mike has still got a little while left. But we're saying goodbye to two people that have a tremendous amount of time with Mark Borst and with Mike Papun, a lot of experience here in the county. And they're going to be missed. And now, probably the two most crusty employees that I've ever worked with were Mike Borst and, Mark Borst and Mike Papun. So, that'll be an interesting dynamic also as we move forward. I consider them both friends, so I can give them a little bit of trouble. But back to Justin, you knocked it out of the park on the interview. You've got a tremendous amount of experience. I sincerely appreciate it. I appreciate that you brought your family here today. I had an opportunity to meet them this morning and speak with them a little bit. When we had larger desks at our last location, I had a Ukraine flag flying in front of my position every time. We're kind of cramped today, so I don't have it here. But they are from Ukraine. And I, that is something near and dear to my heart, as most people know, because I did have an opportunity to work over there for three years. So, again, I sincerely appreciate that the commission unanimously picked the right person for that job at the right time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Powell?
Howl. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I wasn't going to say you guys are crusty. Is that the word he used? Crusty? I don't know. I don't think that's the way I would describe this at all. I would tell you that I am celebrating Justin being promoted to this position. I think that's, you are, Counselor just said you're the perfect person, and I agree with that. You are absolutely perfect for this position. And the fact is, I expect one of these days, we'll be talking about your thirty-five years of experience at Sedgwick County. So, I think that you have a long career here ahead of you, I think. And I think you're going to do a tremendous job. I'm trying to reflect, I think Jennifer Magania was a, was a, she was chief counsel for a short time, wasn't she?
Mr. Howell, she was, when Rich Usen retired in early, I believe, twenty-fifteen, Jennifer took over for a few months and then was hired by Bob Layton to come over to City of Wichita.
Well, anyway, I think if I count that one, I believe that you're the fourth I think I've worked with, and you'll be number five that I've worked with. So, we've had some change since I've been here. But I do want to say about Mike Papun, I think that, you know, politics is tough sometimes, and you've done a great job serving all five commissioners, no matter what's going on. And that's hard to do. I think we are more friends now, because I've gotten to know you so well. I just appreciate you as a person. You're a great person. And I think that you manage the issues in the office. It just demonstrates that you're a great leader, a great manager of all the people and the issues in the office. You've done a tremendous job. Counselor's Office, when it does what you have done, it just seems like it's in the background, keeping us safe as a county and keeping us out of trouble. As Commissioner Dennis just said, Dennis said, we tend to get ourselves in trouble, and you keep us on the straight and narrow path. So, thank you for all you've done for the commissioners. I just, this is about you as well. But celebrating Justin coming on, I think this is a bittersweet moment for the county. We appreciate all that Justin's already done. I know he's going to be tremendous going forward, but we also going to miss you greatly as we say goodbye to you. So, thank you.
Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. Well, I'm really excited about this. I hate to see Mike go, and I think we all share that sentiment. But I couldn't imagine someone better to take his place than you. So, really appreciative of everything that you do. This role in particular is one that I feel like if we got the wrong person in there, it would be really bad, not just for us, but for the entire county. You have to not only know so much law, which I feel like I can ask you any question, and you can just rattle off a number, which I don't understand how you do that, but I'm so glad that you can. But there's definitely a sensitivity to this position, that we all have different districts with different needs, and you have to understand those needs and realize that they're different from, you know, each one. So, there's a lot that goes into it. You have to be a very ethical person. And I know that if I have a question or need any kind of advice, I'm going to get not only really good advice, but it'll be ethical as well, which is extremely important in that role. So, I really appreciate you. I'm so glad that unanimously you got this. And I think it's a, we do a lot of 5-0 votes, but this is one that we're all really excited about having a 5-0 vote on. So, just thank you for everything that you've done for us in the past, and I'm really excited that we get to continue working with you forward. And I'm so glad that your family is here with you today. Thank you.
Commissioner Beatty?
Thank you, Chairman. Justin, congratulations. You truly are. There's a lot of talented people, very smart people in Sedgwick County government that I've witnessed so far in five, six months that I've been here. But you have an incredible capacity and intellect that, you're one of the sharpest people I know, Justin. And you have, Commissioner Lopez mentioned it, that your understanding of state statute, municipal law, municipal ordinance, it's very impressive. And it's good to see a new generation moving into leadership roles here at the county. And I think you're a leader in this, Justin, a leader in this community, and you have a capacity to be very objective in conversations. So, I'm excited to work with you on a lot of levels. Mr. Papun, although we haven't known each other long, your disdain for my alma mater is, it's always enjoyable. It's unparalleled. Yes, it is unparalleled. But we have a mutual admiration for many things in life. And I've enjoyed working with you so far. And happy retirement, sir. You absolutely deserve it. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay. Justin, a lot of comments, a lot of support. The torch has been passed. So, and thank you. Your family is here, and welcome to the meeting, and you should be proud. Thanks for putting up with sometimes the endless nighttime and weekend work that we find ourselves in. So, but Justin, I appreciate you've got a lot of support here, and we're proud of that. And Mike, just thank you for everything and our friendship as well. So, appreciate it. Okay. No other comments? Did we already vote to approve you? Okay. Right. So, we are going to. All right. Thanks again. Next item, please.
Item K, a resolution declaring it necessary to authorize preliminary actions related to the acquisition of a site and the structures located there on for county public buildings purposes.
Good morning, Lindsey.
Good morning, Chairman.
Good morning, commissioners, sorry. Lindsay Povisso, your Chief Financial Officer. And I am joined today by Garth Herman from Gilmore and Bell, our bond counsel. Of course, in honor of Papoun walking out the door, we're going to save all the hard questions for him. And then Garth will be in queue if necessary. So the item this morning that we're talking about is a resolution to authorize basically the county to take steps toward doing due diligence and preserving our right to reimburse ourselves with bond proceeds down the road. So if you recall, there's always a process that we go through. We discussed this as a part of your agenda item review on Friday, when the commission authorized a CIP amendment for an administration building. At that time, the commission authorized investigating four options. The purchase of a building that we are talking about today, which is globally known as the Marfan Building, also construction of a new facility at Third and Main, construction of a new facility north of the Garvey Building, and then also a long-term lease here in our current facility. So in order to do the due diligence and execute and return to you with a cost estimate for one of those options, this action is necessary today. It does not guarantee that this is the building that will be purchased. It does not guarantee that we will even do a bond issuance down the road, nor does it guarantee how much that will be. This simply sets a budget of $60,000 for due diligence on the facilities that have been identified. So if you have any questions on the specifics or the details in the resolution, I am most happy to ask Papoun or Garth to assist with that. Otherwise, I would respectfully request that you authorize the resolution.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation, and yes, and thanks for the review and the discussion we had during the agenda review. Okay, is there any questions? I don't see any. I'll make a motion to approve, to adopt the resolution.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Being no other questions, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner How.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, the motion carries. Garth, thanks for, again, all your help and support.
He's not going far, don't get too excited.
Oh, you're on the next item, maybe.
And the next after that.
Okay, all right. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item L, a resolution amending Resolution Number 022-2022, which authorized and provided for the construction of renovations and improvements to certain public buildings in Cedric County, Kansas, and provided for the issuance of general obligation bonds to pay the cost thereof.
Okay. Lindsay.
Commissioners, Lindsay Povisso, your CFO. Nicely job reading that off there, Kelsey. So this item is very similar in nature to what you just approved. In 2022, the commission authorized a list of projects similar to what was done for the admin building just now. It authorized us to begin work on these projects with the intention of potentially funding with bond proceeds down the road. Since then, we have returned a bid on one of those projects, the main courthouse cooling tower. When you approved this about a year ago, the cost was $770,907. Seven seventy, that's an important number. The bid that we received, the sole bid that we received came in at $2,286,622, an increase of about 1.52 million, almost nearly three times. So what we need to do is amend this resolution in order to allow for that expense, with the hope that later this year or early next year, we will be able to sell bonds to reimburse for most of the projects on the list in this resolution. So again, Garth is here from Gilmore and Bell. If there are questions about any of the specific or details, I'd be happy to call him up. Otherwise, I again recommend that you approve the resolution.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Thanks for the information and the presentation. I'll make a motion again that we adopt the resolution.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Being no other comments, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner How.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners.
Next again, next item, please.
Item M, a resolution determining the ad visibility of and authorizing the creation of a benefit district in Cedric County, Kansas, making certain findings relating there to and authorizing and providing for the making of the certain road improvements there in Drater Estates.
Okay. Morning, Lynn.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, for the record, Lynn Packer, your Director of Public Works and County Engineer. I'm here today with Garth Herman, who is famous by now with all the rest items he's on. He's with Gilmore and Bell, our bond counsel. And unlike Lindsay, I'm actually going to let him come up and talk a little bit. So I'm going to share. Today, we are here requesting approval of a resolution to create a road improvement benefit district around Drater Estates. Drater Estates is a relatively new plat subdivision that is in the north of 45th Street North and west of 135th Street West, just to the west of the City of Mayes. And as the title suggests, this is for road improvements in that area. I do have, and I always am bad about this, we should have a PowerPoint to show those But maybe it's not on there. I don't see it. So basically, this is a standard subdivision with about half, a little over a half mile of roads, 0.62 miles of road, to be exact. There are 30 lots, and, okay, there are 30 lots in the subdivision with a total cost of about $931,000 for those improvements. That's fine. We're good. No problem. So at this point, I'm going to have Garth come up and talk to you about the, a little deeper about the financials of this project, as well as the legal aspects of creating the benefit district.
Thank you, Lynn. Good morning, commissioners. Garth Herman with Gilmore and Bell, the county's bond counsel. Appreciate you having me out here this morning. As Lynn mentioned, this project relates to the Drater Estates addition and the road improvements to be built out there pursuant to statute as amended by county charter resolutions. The process for these projects involves the submission of a petition that's signed by, in this case, 100% of the affected property owners, requesting that the county make these improvements at the estimated costs. And then, once those, the construction of those improvements are done, to go ahead and specially assess those costs back against the improved and benefited lots. As Lynn mentioned, the estimated costs are $931,000. By adoption of this resolution, it will authorize the county to move forward with the construction of those improvements pursuant to how the county normally handles these projects. The county pays for these out of available funds as a county project. And then, once the construction is done, us, working with county staff, works through the special assessment process to actually assess those costs back against those 30 lots. At that point, then, the county will actually issue the bonds in order to provide the long-term financing for those projects. Special assessments are paid in order to offset the cost of that bond issue. So with that being said, I'll stand for any questions that you may have, and if not, I would request that you adopt the resolution.
Okay. Thank you, Garth. Okay, Commissioner How has a question.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a couple of quick questions. So 100% of the property owners on that benefit district will have assessments, is that correct?
Correct.
So if they didn't sign the petition and agree to this, they still get an assessment?
Correct.
And how is the cost of this, $931,000? How's that divided out amongst the different property owners?
So in this case, we'll actually assess equally per lot. So amongst the 30 lots, once the final costs are known, in essence, that final amount will be divided by 30, and then each lot will be assessed that cost, to the extent it's not prepaid before the bonds are issued, then that special assessment cost, along with an interest component, will be repaid over a period of years until the full amount of their special assessment has been repaid.
They have the option of paying that all upfront and avoiding an interest payment?
Correct. Correct.
And what's the schedule for repayment? Is how many years?
On a project like this, I believe it would be, Lynn, is it 15 years?
Repayment period for this special assessment project is 15 years. I also want to point out that the petition for the creation of the benefit district was signed by the developer himself, as he owns all lots right now. So when these lots are sold, the prospective owners already know that this is a special assessment tax that will be assessed for 15 years prior to the sale. So all that is upfront.
So right now, these lots are undeveloped?
That is correct.
So that brings up a curious question. If he doesn't sell the lots, is the payment still going to be made to?
Correct. The developer themselves would have to pay until such time as they're sold.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate the answers. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Thanks, Garth. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Thank you, Garth, and thank you for Lynn. Appreciate that. This is in my district. This is a normal process that we go through every time that we have a new subdivision that we just plotted and ready to go for the roads. And again, the money that we put forth will be repaid by specials in the future. So again, it's a normal process move that we adopt the resolution.
I'll second that. Any other questions or comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner How.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thanks again, Garth. Great to see you. Next item, please.
Item N, Report of Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on June 8, 2023.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, purchasing director. This regular meeting on June 8 has three items that we're wanting to have your approval. Our first item is paper stock, various departments, and this is a recommendation to accept the bid from Timber Creek Paper and establish contract pricing for the rates listed. And this is for a period of one year and has a one-year option to renew. Item number two, nice inform recording system for emergency communications and comm care. And this recommendation is to accept the quote from Voice Products Incorporated, and that's shown as the rates listed in the table for a total amount of $175,261, and it covers a period of five years. Our final item, item number three, is the two-each 2024 tandem axle dump trucks. These are equipped with a salt sand spreader, has liquid anti-icing and also de-icing system capabilities. So this is for fleet and public works. Recommendation is to utilize the Sourcewell Contract 060920-KDC, and the total amount is $775,120. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have and recommend approval.
Okay. Thank you, Joe, and your staff for all the work. Is any questions on the board of bids that's proposed? I don't see any. I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation of the board of bids and contracts.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner How.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thank you. You bet. Thanks, Joe. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner. Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office, recommending approval of consent items O through X this morning.
Okay. Thank you. We've had a chance to review these again during our previous meeting, the agenda meeting, anyway. Any questions or comments? I don't see any. I'll make a motion to approve consent items O through X.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions, comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner How.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Committee reports.
Committee reports. Anybody have anything to report on the committees that they serve on? I don't see any right now. Other, or me, I'm sorry, Commissioner Dennis. Next item, please. Let's go there. Next item, please.
Other.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. One of the things that's on our federal legislative agenda, it's on our WAMPO list, it's on the Transportation Coalition Tier One project is the Northwest Expressway. There's a nice article in the Wichita Business Journal that talks about the Northwest Expressway. This, I appreciate that the Business Journal picked it up, because the way that we got the North Junction finished is that we had all the government agencies pushing it, but until business got behind it, we didn't really move forward on the North Junction. Now, with the Northwest, and we call it Northwest Expressway, they're still not calling it Northwest bypass in here, but with the business starting to get behind this, I'm hoping that we can move forward. We have local consults coming up here in another couple of months, and I know that the Transportation Coalition will support this at the local consult. And so with the business community behind it and with the information getting out through the Business Journal, I sincerely appreciate that, because I've been pushing forward as long as I've been a commissioner. It's been worked long before that. David Spear started pushing it, and we've seen what's happened on the east side with K-96, how that that's grown. Exact same thing is going to happen at the west side. That's the only direction that we're going to be able to grow in the future. We've got a number of interchanges. Every one of those will be a huge economic driver with houses and churches and schools in between those major interchanges. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone's had an opportunity to take a look at the Business Journal, because it moves and helps support our legislative agenda that we've got at the state and the federal level. I did talk to Congressman Estes last week and let him know he'd seen it in the Business Journal, and I just hope that we can find the federal funding, with all of the federal funding coming out, to help move this forward. So thanks to the Business Journal for moving this forward. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That was a good article. Also, just noted under other for myself, I'd like to let everybody know that I will be joining a large contingent of Kansans, senators, governor, Dr. Mumma, and everybody at the Paris Air Show. I will be departing Saturday and coming back Tuesday. I could stay a lot longer, but the bulk of the work looks to be Sunday and Sunday evening and Monday, and so then I'll be back Tuesday, but Monday's a holiday anyway. But thank you, commissioners, for supporting and allowing me. Ironically, I was talking to Commissioner How, and he has, I've never been to this air show, but have been strongly recruited to please share our Cedric County presence at this because of the growth that's going on in the air industry in our community. But with that, I was sharing with Commissioner How about that, and ironically, he had been at this same air show how many years ago?
2005. I got to go as a support for one of the Boeing airplanes that we demonstrated there, and it was one of the, it was a great experience. This is an international, the biggest air show of the world is this air show, and it goes between England and France every other year, back and forth. So this is Paris's opportunity, and it's the biggest air show of the world. And yes, not just to demonstrate, you know, like we see at McConnell, we love those airplanes, they're a lot of fun, but this is really a sales opportunity. This is where we sell, this is where we sell commercial and military airplanes to governments around the world. This is a, and to the, you know, American Airlines, for example, Delta, they'll make, they'll make orders of, you know, dozens or 100 airplanes or whatever at this air show. So those announcements will come out, and have someone who is business savvy like Commissioner Meitzner at that air show to represent the local government, I think is pretty important for this, for his travel. So I appreciate you taking time to go.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other comments under other? I don't see any, so next item, please.
Executive Session.
Commissioner How.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would move that the board of county commissioners recess into executive session for 25 minutes until 10:30 for preliminary discussions relating to acquisition of real property for the purpose of discussing the potential purchase of land and buildings for use by county departments, and that the board of county commissioners returns to this room from executive session at 10:30 a.m.
I'll second that. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner How.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And we will be, okay, executive session will be upstairs. We'll see you back at, in 25 minutes. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we'll start in 30 seconds. 15 seconds. 10, 9, 8, 7, 6, 5.